Let's call a human resources committee to order. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Ms. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Jones. Mr. Morsy.
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
You have a motion, a second on the agenda. Any discussion or questions?
No, sir.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, then motion passes. We have two separate requests today. If somebody want to take the first one.
Mr. Chairman.
That's Cole.
I move that we approve the request for authorization to begin the recruitment and hiring process for Director of the Waterloo Housing Authority, Community Planning and Development, and make an appointment.
Second.
I have a motion, a second on this request. I guess you all know that Ethel's retiring. We need to replace her. I told her she can't go, but I guess she's going anyway.
Yeah, I'm a retiree.
And she's only forty.
That's right.
No, that's four years. Five.
So, we do need to replace her, so.
She's irreplaceable.
I had questions, comments? Hearing none.
We'll save comments for later.
Okay. Madam Clerk, I need a roll call, please.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morsy.
Here.
Yes. And that motion passes, all right. Come to her, please.
We approve the request for authorization to make an appointment to approve Sergeant from the Civil Service List to be certified on September twenty-six, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on this request. Any need to talk to the Chief in regards to that? I, yeah, he is here. As you can see, Mr. Pelak retired, and we need to, we're moving people up, so. Do you have any questions for our Chief?
No, sir.
Hearing none, we'll have a roll call on that, please.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morsy.
Yes.
Second. That motion passes. I was gonna say yes, I was waiting for my name. Yes.
Did I skip you?
Yes.
That's okay. I get that respect all the time.
I was gonna say, he's used to that, especially from blondes. That's right.
Okay, we have a motion for adjournment.
Wrong order here, sorry.
Do you have one, or do you want one?
I have a motion for adjournment and, and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.
It's a call of the Finance Committee meeting for order. Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Ms. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Mr. Welper.
And Mr. Welper.
Mr. Welper's sitting.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Welper, yeah.
Here.
Motion approved, the agenda is proposed, and also the minutes of September fifteenth.
I'll second those.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote with a sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Madam Chairlady, I'd be delighted to take the travel request.
Thank you.
First, we have Sergeant Richter and Officer Brom for the Firearms Instructor Recertification School in Johnston, Iowa, October ninth. It costs not to exceed three hundred and thirty dollars. Next, we have Jacob Frederick, Fitness Specialist for the Club Industries Show in Chicago, Illinois, October twenty-second through the twenty-fourth. Costs not to exceed seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. Sergeant Richter and Officer Ailey for the Advanced Sniper Course in Des Moines, Iowa, November third through the seventh, that it costs not to exceed two thousand three hundred and forty dollars. And finally, Brian Baker, Chief HVAC Inspector. Bob Ball, Chief Billy Inspector. Greg Allhelm, Plans Examiner. And Dan Youngblood, Combination Inspector for the two thousand fifteen IBC Significant Changes Seminar in Cedar Rapids, Iowa, November nineteenth, that it costs not to exceed four hundred and eighty dollars. I move we approve those four items.
I'll second those.
We have a motion, second, do we have discussion?
Quick question, just for the record, the Fitness Specialists going to the Trade Show in Chicago, that is in the, that's in the Sports Flex budget for the year, correct?
Correct, it's in the budget, and Jacob is trying to stay on the cusp of what's new, especially with a relatively new facility. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Go ahead.
Madam Chairperson?
Yes.
I just would like to go back just a second, and one of the questions that I had was, in the minutes of last week's meeting, I believe they're not correct, on the second page, in the discussion about Councilman Jones' travel request, I believe that two paragraphs above the pre-authorizations over a thousand, it says Eyes One, Nage, Schmidt abstained, Jones motion carried. I believe the motion failed, and then I believe that brought on the change in the agenda, so.
I would agree.
I was not here for that, so I appreciate you pointing that out, so we would approve the amended minutes.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. And where were we?
Uh, we. I don't think we voted on those.
Okay. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, those items pass, and we have priots.
Madam, uh.
Whatever you want. Karen's.
Uh, on the priots, Community Development, not to exceed six thousand dollars for resourcing the XRF for lead paint testing, engineering for four thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars for replacement deck planks for the Cedar Valley Lakes Trail Bridge south of East Brinker Lake, fire rescue, twenty-six thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy cents for repair of the Pierce Fire Truck number three zero six, leisure services, five thousand dollars for playground mulch, leisure services for three thousand nine hundred and eight dollars for two hundred gallons of broadleaf spray for turf areas throughout the city, and the Police Department, five thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars for five TASR Model X two eight P to replace old and irreparable models.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there discussion, questions? Anyone? Seeing none, all in favor, vote with a sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, those items pass. I move that we approve items six and seven. Copies are on file in the City Clerk's office, and also that we pay the bills this week, and they are three million six hundred and eighty-two thousand four hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty-four cents, and that is three, comma, six eight two, comma, four four two, point six four.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote with a sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, those items pass.
Motion for adjournment. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you for your time.
We're just starting, sure. Okay. He took the gavel away. That's probably the reason for that, but we'll talk about that later. You can't let everyone have the gavel. Welcome this evening to everyone that's joined us in the audience. We are ready to begin our five-thirty council meeting. Madam Clerk, can you read the roll?
Ms. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Morsy.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here. Right. As we stand, we'll stand for a moment of silence, and we do ask that your thoughts are with the fam, the front family, and other things that are taking place in the community. All right, thank you. And we have our very own world, 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 world Councilman, David Jones, who will be leading us in the pledge.
Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Jones.
Certainly. Probably the only thing I got right tonight.
Well, we have to review the tape to hear.
All that practice paid off.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Mr. Welper.
I would like to make a, a motion to approve the agenda as amended, and if you look at item number two, at the resolution, I would like to add the words, and rescind resolution twenty-fourteen dash seven six eight.
Second.
In the consent agenda, I would like to add, request of Deacon Michael Edward Wean for adherence to the noise ordinance on Sunday, September twenty-eighth, twenty-fourteen, starting at ten a.m. to two p.m. for a church event service to be held at the small park across from Newton's Paradise Cafe on the corner of Fourth and Sycamore Streets, including use of a PA system, speakers, microphones, together with recommendation of approval of Director of Safety Services, and also the approval of minutes of September fifteenth, twenty-fourteen regular session, and September eighteen, twenty-fourteen, special meeting as proposed.
Second.
All right, just so. The, the, that last, uh, minute, the one, eight, eight. So, we have a motion, and a second, the agenda, and the minutes, and the special, special session minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an agenda. We have two proclamations this evening, and the first one, I'd like to call up Mike Butler. Mike, are you here? All right, come on up, Mike. Come on up to the, to the door, join me up front. This is a proclamation for, how you doing? It's a proclamation for the USS Enterprise, and I'd like to read. City of Waterloo proclamation, whereas the USS Enterprise, C-Van slash C-VN dash sixty-five was commissioned into the United States Naval Service on November twenty-fifth, nineteen sixty-one, and had remained in active service for over fifty-one years until its inactivation on December first, two thousand and twelve, a seagoing record unmatched by any warship in American history, and whereas the USS Enterprise established a historic career, including being the first nuclear-powered aircraft carrier ever built, sailing all the world's oceans and visiting six of seven continents, deploying twenty-five times from the United States to convey U.S. interests around the world, committing to her primary military function during times of conflict, and committing to humanitarian purposes during times of need and disasters, and whereas the men and women who served aboard the USS Enterprise are the reason the ship was able to perform at the highest level of expectations during her fifty-one years of distinguished service, and whereas the families and communities of the sailors and marines serving aboard the USS Enterprise provided the necessary support for the crewmen while they served their country, and whereas the United States Navy has proudly served this nation for over two hundred and thirty-eight years and provided security for all the freedoms that were, are endowed and have earned, and whereas the USS Enterprise, C-Van backslash C-VN dash sixty-five Association is a social organization dedicated to preserving the history of all ships commissioned at the USS Enterprise, maintaining memories of past and present shipmates, establishing camaraderie among former shipmates and family, and reaching out to communities to promote the value provided to our country by the service of young men and women, and the USS Enterprise, and whereas the USS Enterprise Association has chosen Waterloo, Iowa, as the location for its annual, for its two thousand fourteen annual reunion, has highlighted Waterloo as the premier Iowa community that freely expresses friendship, history, and support for U.S. servicemen and servicewomen. Now, I therefore, Quentin Hart, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim the week of September twenty-second through the twenty-eighth, two thousand and fourteen, as USS Enterprise C-Van, C-VN sixty-five week. All right, Mike, we have a microphone for you, sir.
We really appreciate this. The Enterprise, for those that don't know, was, is, but was, an eleven-hundred-plus-foot-long ship, twenty-five stories tall. We had a hundred and twenty-five airplanes, and when we went to war, we went to war. And it started nineteen sixty-one, it barely had been launched, and went down to help with the Cuban Missile Crisis. On nine-eleven, it was coming home from the Western Pacific and turned around, because you don't need a big ship like that in port when you're at a time of crisis. So, I, we really appreciate the reception. We will be at the Brown Derby one evening. John Deere has been very gracious, the Ramada, the whole city of Waterloo, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. All right, thank you. Our next proclamation is, I'd like to call up Sherman Lundey. Please come on up. Sherman Lundey, welcome, welcome, and this is for, proclamation for Earth Science Week. The City of Waterloo proclamation, whereas geology and the study of all related earth sciences are integral to society, and whereas the earth sciences provide insight into understanding our natural resources, and whereas the earth sciences are necessary in the development and use of our natural resources, and whereas the earth sciences help us to recognize the need for critical management of our watersheds and rivers, and whereas the earth sciences are crucial in the application of practices and projects to reduce flooding from our rivers with wise planning in our watersheds, and whereas information from earth sciences should be incorporated in all of our decisions regarding watersheds that adjoin our river systems. Now, therefore, I, Quentin Hart, Mayor Pro Tem, the City of Waterloo, do hereby, do hereby proclaim the week of October fifth through eleventh, two thousand and fourteen, as Earth Sci- Science Week. So, Mr. Lundey, you have a presentation for us, sir.
Thank you. I place my comments so that I can address this august body with clarity, and my memory fades once in a while, being a geologist, you understand, I live in the past.
Too many, too many facts.
Thank you. We certainly appreciate your continued support of the Earth Science Week program and outreach. Each year, when we have the opportunity to visit with you in the public to thank you for the proclamation, there are two important aspects of Earth Science Week. The first, of course, with the Sunday at the quarry event, is a recreational aspect, where we have with our partners in this effort, the program events for all ages to visit a quarry, to talk with a variety of exhibitors from all aspects of the earth sciences, and to collect rocks, minerals, and fossils. And this year, of course, October the fifth, at our Morgan Quarry, from eleven to four p.m., we're gonna have a huge program out there, and we have the Iowa Geological Survey, US Geological Survey, Isle Water, of course, we have the Rock and Mineral Club, and the University of Northern Iowa. The other aspect is the very serious informational aspect of the earth sciences. The geosciences, or earth sciences, uniquely address land use issues because the earth sciences include the origin, character, and interconnection of natural resources, as well as the natural and human-induced processes that affect these resources. Geoscience information is critical to addressing natural and human-induced hazards, and in addition, is critical in determining the availability of natural resources, such as clean air, potable water, fertile soils, minerals, and energy, along with resolving environmental issues such as soil erosion, surface water quantity and quality, and groundwater supply. Thank you for the proclamation, and do join us at Morgan Quarry on October fifth to see and learn more.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Lundey, and thank you for making the.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Mr. Welper.
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, that's one A through B ten, and within that is the bills payment, which Ms. Cole should have.
The bills this week are three million six hundred and eight, two thousand four hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty-four cents, three, comma, six eight two, comma, four four two, point six four.
Second.
All right, motion's been made with the proper second. Any questions about the consent agenda? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morsy.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
All right, we have a consent agenda that's been approved. Public hearing, number two, somebody take them on. Mr. Schmidt.
Item number two is the amended item, and that is a request, or motion received and filed, proof of publication, notice of public hearing, and that's a request of Sergio Rangel for the sale and conveyance of a new construction home located at ten nineteen Lafayette Street in the amount of ninety-five thousand one hundred dollars through the Neighborhood Stabilization Program.
Second.
All right, motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right, the hearing is open. Madam Clerk, is there any objections on file?
There are no objections on file.
No objections on file, the hearing is open. Is there anyone that has any questions for, or against this particular item on the agenda? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I'd make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Madam Clerk, a roll, roll call vote.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morsy.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Any questions from council before we go to the next? All right, Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I would move then to adopt a resolution authorizing said sale and conveyance, and authorize the city clerk to prepare and deliver deed accordingly, and rescind resolution two zero one four dash seven six eight.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Madam Clerk, a roll call vote.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morsy.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
All right, passes. All right, number three on here.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Mr. Welper.
Number three is a motion to receive and file proof of publication, notice of the public hearing, for the twenty-fourteen Burns Tennis Complex Resurfacing Project.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any objections on file?
There are no objections on file.
All right, the hearing is open now. Is there anyone in the audience that has comments either for or against this particular item on the agenda? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, like a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Madam Clerk, a roll call vote.
Mr. Morsy.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, like to adopt a resolution ordering construction.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morsy.
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, like to make a motion to receive and file, instruct city clerk to read bids, and refer to Leisure Services Director for review.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Any questions before we continue? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morsy.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can you read those bids?
We have two bids. First one's from L Iowa, from Bluegrass, Iowa, five percent bid security. The base bid is twenty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars. Option number one is twenty thousand eight hundred dollars, and option number two is twenty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars. The second bid is from Pro Track and Tennis from Bennington, Nebraska, with five percent bid security, base bid of nineteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars. Option number one, thirteen thousand six hundred and fifty-six dollars, with the base plus number one for thirty-two thousand six hundred and forty dollars, and option number two is nineteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars, base plus number one and number two in the amount of fifty-one thousand six hundred and twenty dollars.
All right, thank you. Just to repeat, those bids were open on September eighteenth publicly, so we had the reading of those bids. Who's that caller you have? Can get those, or you already have a copy? Okay, okay. All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Number four.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Mr. Schmidt. Item number four is, I'd like to make a motion, receive and file proof of publication, a notice of public hearing, and that's the bid for janitorial services for the City of Waterloo Public Works Building.
Second.
All right, motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the hearing is now open on this item. Madam Clerk, are there any objections on file?
There are no objections on file.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against this particular item on the agenda? Second time.
Like to make a motion.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Hart, I'd like to make some comments about this.
All right.
Oh, we need to close the hearing first.
Leave the hearing, get in. Leave the hearing, get in.
Okay.
After that, we'll come to you.
Make a motion to close the hearing?
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing is closed. Mr. Schmidt?
No, Patrick did, yeah.
Yes.
Could we have something on the table first?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, Quentin, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid document, et cetera.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Mr. Morrissey, do you have questions for us?
Well, again, this is the second time we've had an issue like this come up regarding janitorial services and hiring somebody other than doing this in-house, and at the same time, it looks like the people that the City of Waterloo are going to be using to provide this service, from the information that I got today, if the low bid is accepted, the majority of the people will be part-time people making $8 an hour with virtually no benefits unless they happen to work on a holiday. And again, I remember that when we had our goal-setting session, one of the top three was that we were going to project a positive image. Another thing is that, what kind of message do we send if we're saying we want to attract good-paying jobs into Waterloo, but then as a city council, we vote to hire a company that is going to pay their workers only eight bucks an hour? And I know that Mark Rice had sent out some information, and which all of us had received, and which it talks about $9 to $13 an hour. Well, I had contact with Marsden, I also had contact with Midwest Janitorial, and then just did some of my own figuring, which may not be the best, but at least it's my own figuring. But what I found out from Marsden today was exactly that, that it's not $9, it is $8 an hour. These employees are going to work 20 hours a week, no benefits. There's one supervisor that's going to come in for three and a half hours a week for $17 an hour, and then special services employee come in for five hours per week at $12 an hour. And to me, it just sends the wrong message, and I just, the difference in the amounts that Midwest had put the bid at and Marsden leaves me just wondering what is missing here. Quite frankly, doing something in-house allows us to hold those workers accountable, even if we were to just have two part-time employees, I know part-time employees are, they have to be no more than 19 hours per week, but we could do that. And I believe that the administrative cost save, the accountability factor would lead us to want to have this return to do in-house, even if it only meant those two part-time, 19-hour employees, because we could pay them a wage $10 to $12 an hour, and I believe that the taxpayers and we as a city council would be moving that message forward that Waterloo does want to pay their workers at least a minimum wage, at a minimum wage level of $10 an hour or better. So I am going to vote against this.
Okay. So you indicated that the conversation you had with the lower bidder, it is not $9 to $13 per hour, he indicated, or she indicated, $8 per hour?
Correct.
Okay.
For the ones that are basically doing the majority of the work, for the one person, the 20-hour-per-week person.
Okay. Counsel, any other discussion?
Just a quick question. Do we, we already have full-time janitorial staff with the city, don't we, already? No? Senator? Nothing. Well, there is some with the center, right?
You have something to add? You can come add it.
Craig Clark, building official. The majority of our staff is done by an outside company. There is a few, Center for the Arts, Sportsplex, a few things like that, that do have janitorial staff, but the majority of the buildings are done by outsiders. Is a Sportsplex part-time janitorial or full-time?
Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director, part-time.
Do you know offhand what the wage is on that part-time?
I would have to look. If I stated it here, I might make a mistake, but I can look it up for you after the meeting.
Okay. I mean, it's not super high, right?
No.
It's closer?
It would be, take this as a guesstimate, it would be at or around $10 to $12 an hour, but I would really want to look that up to verify it.
Okay. Craig Clark, building official. David, I did look that up when we were looking at, when Pat, I got the information on Pat a while back, and it was right at like $10.15 an hour, I believe.
Mr. Hertz, that just to me goes back to if we can, if it's working someplace, why can't we approve that in this particular instance?
Counsel, any other?
I think it's challenging when we put it out to bid. I mean, we can't, well, I suppose we could stipulate a minimum, but I think that gets a little tough.
Yeah. You know, you can tell them what to pay.
Oh, right. It's the other.
We also, if we don't, if we don't have a bid that we're in favor of, though, also we do have the right now to vote for that as well.
Another comment, Mr. Hertz, would be that, you know, if we were to say that this would go in-house, and that $10.50 was a number that we had out there, to me, that would send a message to any future bidders that they need to come back with something that's going to pay people, if they're going to be part-time, at least a wage of $10.50 an hour.
It's kind of a slippery slope.
Counsel, any other discussion? All right. We have a motion on the table. Madam Clerk, could you, I mean, a roll call vote?
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hertz?
No.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Can we have a roll call vote?
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hertz?
No.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make a motion and receive and file and instruct the city clerk to read bids and refer to Public Works Director for review.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to adopt a resolution and to approve the award of contract at Marsden.
Let her read the, oh, I'm sorry. Let her read the bids.
We had two bids. First one is Midwest Janitorial Service Incorporated from Cedar Rapids, Iowa. A bid security of $1,872 and a bid amount of $3,120 per month. Second bid is Marsden Building Maintenance LLC of Des Moines, Iowa, with a 5% bid security and a bid amount of $1,950 per month.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to adopt a resolution and to approve the award of contract
to Marsden Janitorial Service of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of $1,950 for the janitorial service at the City of Waterloo Public Works Building, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hertz?
No.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries. Number five.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Mr. Welper?
Number five's a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of the public hearing for the development agreement with the Hotel President Partners, LP, for the redevelopment of the 500 Sycamore Street, and authorizing a tax rebate schedule at 10 years. Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, do we have any objections on file?
There are no objections.
Objections? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against this particular item on the agenda? Going a second. You guys look so bored out there. Going a second time?
Make a motion to close the hearing? Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hertz?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Welper?
Like to make a motion to a resolution, excuse me, approving the said development agreement and authorize mayor clerk to execute said document. Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Any more questions, counsel?
Quentin, could we have Noel just give us a little bit of an overview on this, so everybody understands exactly what's going on here?
Don Anderson, Community Planning Development Director.
And I hinted out a, corrected one, I had a small error in the original council communication, but it talks about essentially they're looking at putting about $3.75 million into the building at 500 Sycamore Street. This was an Iowa Finance Authority tax credit approved project through the last round. They'll be raising the taxable value from the now value of $1,073,000 to a new value of about $2.5 million through this investment. They're asking for a 10-year abatement schedule similar to what the Cura would allow. The reason we're going with the development agreement instead of a Cura is based on what we can use for a base value. The TIF rebates gives us a little bit more flexibility. What they're requesting is a, the 10-year schedule over the 2011 value of $239,850. And you can see in those next three paragraphs, I've explained kind of the difference there. The building was valued at $240,000 for a number of years, because it was set up as a co-op. Working on the transfer of the building for this project, they had to change the status of the building to raise that from the $240,000 to the million-dollar amount. Again, the project as described would further raise the value to 2.5 million due to the $3.75. By working with the developer, the city would still see over $295,000 in taxes over a 10-year period. Without the project remaining at the million-dollar number, the city would see about $218,000 in taxes, or if the building were converted back to a co-op as it was before, the city would see approximately $48,000 in taxes. So again, it seems very favorable for the city to work with the developer, see the building fixed up, and gain more in taxes. Also, as we move ahead to fix up the building, that'll bring in more taxes over time. It'll immediately bring in more than $26,000 in permanent values, construction jobs to the community, and other benefits of construction such as hotel motel funds, added sales at restaurants downtown, added rental of equipment for construction, added sales of construction materials, et cetera. So we are recommending approval.
All right. Thank you, Noel, for the 30-second review.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, sir.
Noel? What is the frozen value then, the $1,073,000? Is that the frozen value above that?
The frozen value would be the $239,850, which is the highlighted part of that handout I gave. So, and then the rebates would be eligible for anything over that, starting at 80%, then going to 70, 60, 50, 40, 40, 30, 30. Excuse me, 20, 20.
But it's also in a TIF district.
It is in a TIF district. This is a TIF district development agreement.
Then what's?
That is what they're asking for, is they're asking for rebates, but they're asking for it on a similar schedule as what the Cura would have allowed.
But what's the TIF frozen? The $200,000?
It'd be the $240,000 amount.
Good questions. Good questions. Any other questions by counsel? All right. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hertz?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number six.
Mr. Hertz?
Mr. Morrissey?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing for a request of Sue Schuman and Sarah Kirstenbrock to vacate the 20-foot platted building line located in Lot 2 of Miller Park Edition at 419 Home Street for the purpose of constructing a three-seasons addition.
Wait a second.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any objections on file?
There are no objections on file.
I believe this went through planning and zoning with the recommendation for approval. Right now, the hearing is open. Is there anyone in the audience that would have any questions about this, either for questions about this, either for or against this project? Going a second time.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file recommendation of approval of Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Right. Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time in ordinance, vacating 20-foot platted building line located on Lot 2 of Miller Park Edition at 419 Home Street for the purpose of constructing a three-seasons addition.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor Protim.
Mr. Welper.
Counsel, on Thursday morning, you heard the information in regards to this project, and I hold nothing against the present owners of this house. Previous owners had planned to build a deck on their property, and what they told the city, they were going to build it on the east side, and actually, they built it on the west side. The city didn't find out about it until now when it came up that they've asked to build a three-season porch. Now, this property is now 10 feet into the boundary. What's the word I'm looking for here?
Setback.
Setback, thank you. So, I'm a little troubled as to why we would agree to let them build a larger structure when we already know it's an illegal situation. We spent so much time working on our code of ordinances, making sure that every word was correct and as to how we would conduct business in the city of Waterloo. Yet, in the last three months, we allowed a 12-foot driveway larger than it's supposed to be. Couple months ago, well, month ago, we allowed a deck to be built eight foot onto city property, and now we're looking to do another 10-foot over on a setback. I question why we would do this. Again, I hold nothing against the present owners, but why would we agree to continue to do something that we know is incorrect?
Thank you, Mr. Welper.
Mr. Mayor Protim.
Mr. Lind.
Noel, I'm completely confused. The document says the staff recommends denial. Is that, does the planning staff recommend denial on this?
Let me add to that. Noel, when the, you can, no, please step away. We'll never deny you that opportunity, put you on the hot seat. But Noel, when it went from planning and zoning, when it went from staff to planning and zoning, that was the recommendation that went to planning and zoning, right?
That is correct.
Okay. So, that's the state, that's the recommendation that went to planning and zoning.
The staff said to planning and zoning, deny it.
Yeah.
Planning and zoning said, okay.
Right.
Okay, gotcha. Sorry.
It's fine.
Noel, I was just wondering, would Noel or somebody like to tell us the discussion maybe that went on at planning and zoning, seeing as I don't think, I'm assuming there's nobody here from the applicant to speak on their behalf? And it was, was it a unanimous?
I was not at planning and zoning. So, Eric Schrader talked about the discussion.
And was it a unanimous planning and zoning vote? Can you tell me?
Eric Schrader, City Planner. I have to look at that and get back to you. I don't recall that one. This one is kind of a unique situation in that there's a setback issue and a platted building line issue. It went to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I don't recall that vote off the top of my head. I'll have to look at that. But it then went on to the Board of Adjustment. The Planning Commission was just looking at the building line vacate, which they make a recommendation to the City Council. A separate issue is it also needed a variance to the setback requirement from the Board of Adjustment. It did go before the Board of Adjustment and was approved for that variance setback. In regarding the deck on the wrong side of the house, we did do some further investigation into that in discussions with the property owner. The permit for a deck that was going to be on the opposite side of the house, they pulled a permit but never built that deck. There already was a deck. It did not show it on the plans that when they took out the permit for the deck on the west side of the house, but there already was a deck on the east side of the house that extended over the setback line and that platted building line. We did track it down to as far back as at least 1982. We have a set of 1982 aerial photos. I can't say for sure that it existed before the zoning ordinance was adopted in 1969, which would make it grandfathered in, legal nonconforming. It could be, or it might have been built sometime between 69 and 1982, but I can at least track that there was a deck back there until at least 1982. So, this is going in the same footprint of that deck. The deck has a roof overhang structure, and the Board of Adjustment felt that the proposed three-season room would be a much more attractive, you know, look than what the current deck with the roof overhang was, particularly if the structure would be considered legal nonconforming and not illegal, which there's not a lot of information to track between 1969 and 1982, so.
So, there was, there was no building permit taken out to do any of this?
For the deck on the east-hand side, we could not find, but we know it was built pre-1982, so, I mean, the records aren't the clearest going that far back.
So, Eric, can I ask another question? Just so I can get this straight myself. The Board of Adjustment, the Board of Adjustment approve what we're taking a look at tonight or something else?
There's a, the zoning ordinance has a required setback, how far you have to be from the property line, which the Board of Adjustment has the authority to grant a variance to that. But in this particular subdivision, there's also a platted building line, so even if there were no setback requirement at issue here, because it's crossing a platted building line, that building line needs to be vacated. So, there's essentially two separate approvals, a building line vacate and a variance to the setback, that both have to be approved for the project. One of them being approved without the other does no good.
So, they're in conflict with each other?
Only if one gets approved and the other doesn't. I mean, it's, I mean, they have to have both approval, or the project will not be able to proceed. And they have now received the variance from the Board of Adjustment for the setback, but they still need the vacate of the platted building line.
Are there any, are there any visibility issues potentially with the three-seasons room?
No, we didn't see any visibility issues. They are on a corner lot, but there's still a pretty decent amount of setback from the structure to the street itself, and it's not right at the corner of the property, at the corner of the intersection.
And how much could this potentially add to the taxable value of that house? Would that have an impact on their property value?
I wouldn't be the expert on that, but I would definitely think that the three-season room would be significantly more valued than the deck with an overhang.
And Eric, if, if this motion were to not be approved, what happens to the deck that's there now? Does that stay? Does that have to be removed? What's the status of that?
Without further documentation as to when it was built, since we know it was at least there since 1982, more than likely, we would not try and pursue it as an illegal structure and make it be removed. We would have to, you know, to pursue that action, we would have to be able to prove in a court of law that it was illegally built, which to do that, we'd have to be able to document that it, you know, that it was built after 1969, and we don't really have any documentation indicate. So, more than likely, if this were denied, the deck would be able, allowed to stay as is, but this action is needed for them to remove the deck and add the three-season room.
Gotcha. Thank you. Counsel, Mr. Jones.
So, what is the recommendation of staff at this point? I'm still a little unclear.
Staff are still denying, I would assume.
Schrader, again. I mean, staff was recommending denial when it went to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and recommending denial of the variance setback when that went to the Board of Adjustment. The Board of Adjustment has subsequently approved that, so, I mean, I don't, Noel can address further, but a recommendation of denial at this point probably doesn't make as much sense.
Yeah, I would say, looking at the pictures, I would say, and I understand where you're coming from, Ron, but that three-season porch is a vast improvement over that deck according to those pictures, and that deck's apparently not leaving, so.
Have you driven past the place?
No.
What are you saying?
But I said the three-season.
It sticks out quite a ways compared to the other houses on the block.
All right, so, um.
For whatever that's worth.
We have, any other questions by counsel?
All right, we do have a motion on the table. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Welper?
No.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
No.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
Mr. Morrissey. Mr. Hart liked to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Hart?
I think we did skip one. Wait, let's back up. Hold on a sec.
No, we didn't. We, we went, we closed the hearing. We went to motion, filed, consider. There was a motion on the table. Then we had to do a roll call vote. I actually took notes on here.
Okay.
Motion with votes.
Excellent. Thank you.
Good job.
Right on top of it.
Now, I'm confused. Madam Clerk, there's a motion with the second to suspend the rules. Roll call vote.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Lind?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
All right, the motion failed. All right, move on to number seven.
Mr. Mayor Protim.
Mr. Sch.
Item number seven, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication, a notice of public hearing, and as for the expansion of the Martin Road Development Plan Tax Increment Financing or TIF District.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Right. Madam Clerk, were there any objections on file?
There are no objections.
Do we ever ask, are there any in support on file?
Never.
All right, so, the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone here that would like to speak for or against this particular item on the agenda? Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address.
Gloria Little, 822 Baltimore. I'm here tonight to ask the City Council to vote no on the request to span, expand the Martin Road TIF District. Noel Anderson said there has been some interest in the area. Have you asked what kind of businesses? I heard a rumor that a strip mall and a restaurant would go in there. Is that the kind of economic development TIF funds should support? I've been concerned for a long time about the increasing burden on residential property owners and longtime businesses who have been the backbone of this community through good times and devastating economic times. We are the ones who are continuing to carry the burden of the general budget. I want to toss out a few figures today just for the record. I am hoping the council members are well aware of these numbers, but mostly, I want people who are here and those who are listening, who may not exactly understand this complicated law, to understand at least the dollars, dollar figures involved. I got these figures from the County Auditor's Office in June 2014. The figures are the amounts they transferred to the city for the various TIF accounts as of January. San Marnon TIF, 1,264,423. Downtown TIF, 1,689,077. Logan Plaza, 292,253. Raph, 429,804. Martin Road, 559,533. Midport, 1,572,601. Northeast Industrial, 899,999. Total, 6,707,690. It would be simplistic to say that we would have had nearly additional $7 million in the general fund if it weren't for this diversion of tax dollars. I understand some of these projects may not have happened without this program, and there is debt involved. But I also know that we desperately need dollars to fund our basic city services. Two years ago, we got a tax increase in the form of a utility tax. Last year, we cut police and fire protection. Where can we go for dollars this spring? I'd like to remind the council that you represent people sitting on this side of the room, and those who aren't present but are deeply affected by your decisions. Do you feel you are fairly representing the residents of your ward by increasing taxes to fund giveaway programs? I ask you to vote no, and then establish a committee of citizens and appropriate city leaders to study our existing programs. Some are very old. If they aren't developed by now, is there, is there a chance further development is likely? We need transparency in how this money is spent, how much actual debt is out there, and when the debt will be paid. We need goals, limits, and an end in sight. We need you to be the watchdogs we elected you to be. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to speak either for or against this particular project?
David Drier, 3145 West Forest Street. I have to, I guess, echo what this lady just said, and she did it very eloquently. I came here in 2009, and my taxes have continued to rise. I see people in these TIF districts seem to get money off of our backs, off of our money, that's, keeps raising taxes to pay for the essential services that they increase the need for, actually. And I think it's time that, agreeing with her, again, that we sit down and talk about, do we need more TIF district? Do we have the TIF districts we already have filled up? Just because somebody else wants a different area of town, we just, we seem to jump on, well, let's go ahead and put a TIF there too, and do they always come with a, a plan in mind to add to the taxes, or do we give them tax abatement after they build something? Tax abatements cost us money. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Drier.
This isn't sir. This is Forrest Dilibou, 1725 Huntington Road. There have been 40 years of TIF. There was a very nice guest editorial in the Sunday paper. I would encourage all of you to get it and read it if you haven't. You know, it, it just explains how the taxpayers, the lady spoke to us, the taxpayers. Each time you do a TIF, you continually burden us. Forty years they haven't been paying for police and fire, is the best way I can put it. And when, when they need more money, they come to us. They do stormwater taxes. They do utility taxes. They, they do fees. They increase landlords' fees 500%. You know, it just never stops. You just keep coming to the same people, taking it out of those pockets. Retired people, wrath workers, John Deere workers, living on a fixed income. Someday, you've got to start thinking about us. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Forrest Dilibou. Is there anyone else that would like to speak either for or against this particular item? Second time.
Mr. Mayor Protim, I'd like a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second.
Mr. Mayor Protim.
You have, you have questions or concerns?
Concern?
Yeah. Can we close the hearing?
Sure.
And we can have some discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Mayor Protim, I'd like to make a motion and receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time in ordinance adopting the expansion of the Martin Road Development Plan Tax Increment Financing District.
Second.
All right, we have questions. Mr. Lind.
I would like to make a motion that we table this item and have a work session only on this TIF to explain what are the potential jobs we're going to get, how much capital investment. There's all kinds of questions about TIFs. I don't, I generally don't support expanding their TIFs, but the least we should do is listen to a argument for this particular TIF, Martin Road TIF, from the staff.
So, just this particular issue right now?
This, this TIF, Martin Road TIF.
I'd second that motion.
All right, motion has been made. It's a, Mr. Attorney, the, the.
Motion to table takes precedence. You can vote on that first.
All right.
Glenn, if, I've got some questions before we get to that, so I don't know if you had anything else.
Motion to table's normally not debatable, but you can, if nobody objects, you can do it.
And I guess I just, and I know this is kind of short notice, but I didn't know if either Noel or Michelle would want to speak tonight to some of the questions that have been asked, or if they want to wait until we have that work session, so I guess I just ask that question.
If it gets tabled, we can answer those, but you want, you want some clarity prior to that.
Well, if they'd like to. Now, again, I, they're getting kind of caught off guard about where the $6 million.
Right.
Used, so I'd leave it up to them.
I personally'd rather see it in black and white and have some, allow them some time to do the math.
Okay. So, there is a, a motion to table on the floor right now, which takes precedence. Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call vote?
Mr.?
How, how long indefinitely? Two weeks? What are we talking?
Two weeks to the next council meeting, but then we'd have to have a work session. We'd have to have a work session that meeting, and then it would come up, so I know council generally doesn't like to vote on work session items at the same council meeting, so that will push it back three weeks.
We could have the work session next Monday night.
Yeah, I won't, I won't be here.
You will.
Not with you either.
There's no council meeting.
I'll be at a council meeting for a work session. Oh, you can do it Thursday morning after an agenda meeting, too. I mean, I, I don't know, is there a timeliness to this, Noel?
I might be in training.
But we need, I mean, if we need to move it along, I think we should have it after an agenda meeting or something.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. One of the projects that was noted, they would like to begin construction, and they did not want to begin construction without this happening. Some, from their standpoint, I would say there is a timely manner to it.
So, we wouldn't have an agenda meeting this Thursday?
You said that, so there wouldn't be an agenda meeting this Thursday?
We could do it Thursday.
The prior, prior Thursday, the following Thursday. So, we'd be looking at.
It's Thursday.
Thursday, the following Thursday, whatever's the next, whatever is the date of not this next Thursday, the following Thursday, we have a.
Second or third of October somewhere.
October 2nd.
October 2nd.
And that's, that's dependent upon if the motion to table passes.
Right, correct.
Correct. And I, I mean, there, I mean, I have a lot of concerns just about TIFs in general, and I don't believe tabling this is going to answer those questions. I just, you know, as long as we're talking, I think that this needs to be defeated, just point blank, and then we can talk about TIFs later. We have enough TIFs in Waterloo.
Yeah, what Councilman Lind, I believe, is saying that we need to hear pros and cons based upon this particular item, whether we have TIFs in other areas. We need to have some discussion for or against, so we understand exactly what we're getting into. I believe the lady posed some very valuable questions at the beginning. Also, staff may have some other ideas that, about this situation, so I think we need to hear both sides of the arguments before we actually vote to defeat this particular item. But that's just my, that's just my opinion. The more information we can get, the better. So, we have a motion to table. If anyone would like to call the question, and let's vote on this motion to table. I'd really appreciate it. The date is October second, a, at the agenda meeting, have a session where Tiff is outlined and talked about it in regards to this project, pros, cons, and then that following Monday, which would be the-
Six.
Six, we'd actually bring this back to council for full vote.
Mr. Hart?
Yes, ma'am.
Point of information, is a work session on Tiff something that people other than this group might be interested in? In other words, is eight-twenty in the morning the best time to have a work session on something that seems to be a pressing issue for so many in the room?
That's a good question. Councilman Schmidt did offer next Monday. I think everybody else said they were going to be gone.
I would suggest that we televise it so those that couldn't, couldn't watch it that morning, they could watch a replay of it.
So we go ahead and televise that meeting that morning?
If it's, if we can do that.
We got one, two, we got cameras back there, so can make it happen. Does that, is that not sufficient enough for you, Ms. Cole?
I just think that it's, if you're talking about being transparent and doing the people's business in front of the people, eight-twenty in the morning is not the time to do it.
I'd agree with that.
But if everyone else thinks it's a good idea, I've got one vote.
Well, I mean, this is a democratic process, so if, you know, a very valuable, valuable suggestion, so.
Why don't we just change the dates?
Well, that would have to be Mr. Lynn's choice, because he's the one that made the motion.
I think, I think-
Well, he, he didn't add the, the, the dates yet, he just made the, he just voted to table, but we still are in debate about what the actual dates are, so he hasn't-
It's a, this is a twenty-year decision, so I think maybe Ms. Cole's probably right, eight o'clock's probably not the time to learn about a, something that we're going to live it with for twenty years.
Mr. Lynn, would you accept amendment to have a work session Monday, October sixth, before our meeting, and this be on the agenda the following Monday, the thirteenth?
Sure.
Second.
All right. So that motion has been made with the proper second. We would have October sixth work session on Tiff in relation to this particular project, and then it will come back to a full council vote on October thirteenth. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Right, so that item has been tabled. All right, item number eight.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Mrs. Cole.
I move to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on the River Fred Stadium ten year lease with a five-year extension option with Waterloo Ball Club LLC, Waterloo Bucks Baseball.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Madam Clerk, were there any objections on file?
There were no objections on file.
No objections on file. The public hearing is now open. I think Mr. Hudding is here with some visitors.
Yes, Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. This comes to you with a recommendation to approve from Leisure Services Commission, and our chairman, Kevin Evans, is here tonight. We also have three people from Waterloo Bucks. Doug Nelson is here, Gary Keppel, and Dan Corbin. I'd invite any or all of them to, to give you a brief, somewhat under an hour overview of what your plans are.
My name's Gary Keppel from Cedar Rapids. I'm the president of the Board of Directors of the Cedar Rapids Colonels. Just kind of like to give you a little bit of background of who we are, but thank you for the time tonight, and thank Paul and Kevin for their cooperation and assistance as we work through this process. The Waterloo Ball Club will be a wholly owned subsidiary of the Cedar Rapids Ball Club. The Cedar Rapids Ball Club owns the Cedar Rapids Colonels, which are members of the Midwest League, which the Waterloo team used to be part of, it was part of its history. And we've had professional baseball in Cedar Rapids since eighteen ninety. We're a community-owned organization. We're actually a for-profit corporation with a hundred and twenty local individuals and organizations owning two hundred and thirty-three shares of stock, but no dividends have ever been distributed, and all the monies go back into the operation of the Ball Club. We work very closely with the City of Cedar Rapids, who owns the ballpark there, and the Veterans Commission, which is similar to the Leisure Services Group here, they're kind of our landlord, and we're the primary tenant there. Cedar Rapids Colonels and the Cedar Rapids Ball Club is interested in purchasing the Waterloo Bucks for several reasons. One is there's a tremendous baseball history, both professional and amateur. Way back when, I was actually a member of one of the amateur teams in Waterloo Merchants, but I know from my history of working at Cedar Rapids Ballpark as a kid, and watching it over the years, and actually living here in Waterloo for a year, that people like Dennis Leonard, who's a personal friend, played here, and a lot of great professional players, but a lot of great people here locally, like Virgil Erickson and Tom Simpson, and some of those others played for the Merchants. It's been a very supportive community. It's an excellent geographical fit for us, and it's close enough that we can share resources, share ideas, which we've already started to do with Dan and his staff, and yet far enough away to be a distinct market from Cedar Rapids. We are affiliated with the Minnesota Twins, and for instance, Waterloo has a great Minnesota Twins following here with radio coverage and everything of that sort. But the bottom line is that putting the two organizations together makes both organizations stronger, and we look forward to being a part of the Waterloo community and, and active. Steve's had to put up, I mean, for many years from the telecommunications industry, but hopefully we'll, we'll have more fun in the baseball industry than we did in the telecom world, so. Thank you.
We need to get a council baseball team, just travel around the state and compete against other councils, but thank you.
Well, I mean, if you're like the rest of us, the older we get, the better we were, so.
I'm going to turn it over to Doug Nelson as our general manager.
Thank you.
You guys will be out of here at midnight, so I'm leaving.
You know, that sounds like a challenge to me. My name's Doug Nelson, I'm the general manager of the Cedar Rapids Colonels, certainly have been working very closely with Dan, and I appreciate your consideration of the lease, and certainly ask for your approval of it. If you do approve it tonight, we're slated to close on the sale of Waterloo Bucks next Monday, the twenty-ninth, and we're already been having preliminary discussions with Dan, and looking forward to, to the future, and I can tell you, my goal is not to mess with the winning formula, so we will certainly, Dan will continue to be the general manager of the Waterloo Bucks, his two staff, full-time staff will stick with the team as well. They'll remain a collegiate summer league baseball team as a member of the Northwoods League. So our plan is really to help Dan build off the, what he's done so well, and to provide additional personnel resources. One idea we have is to become much more active in the community. Some of the things we've done in Cedar Rapids that we'd like to bring up here is we have a pretty extensive summer reading program, where we encourage elementary kids to read throughout the summer, and we'll certainly be bringing that program up, as well as increasing number of mascot and player appearances into the community, as well as using the stadium to reach out to nonprofits to help them either fundraising opportunities, or just to spread their, their mission. We're also looking at doing a little bit of TLC with the stadium. So it's a wonderful facility. Our hope is to borrow some, some personnel and staffing from Cedar Rapids, to work with the Waterloo team, to do a little bit of deep cleaning this October. We've been working with Paul to look at possibly painting the seating, the bleachers themselves, so really start to, to do some landscaping as well, to just make the stadium look a little bit better. So again, very excited to get started, and just ask for your approval of the lease.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Dan Corbin, General Manager, Waterloo Bucks. I'll try and keep it short and sweet with the sun setting. We're, we're really excited, our front office is with the possible ownership change here, based on the lease approval. You know, the ballpark is, is, is a great facility for our fans and for recruiting players. We're the winningest ball club in summer collegiate baseball throughout the nation the last two years, and you do that with the great players and great facilities, and thank the city for their great working relationship in the past, and look forward to the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Great experience. Are there any other, anyone else in the audience who wants to speak for or against this particular item, going a second time?
I move that we close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
I move we adopt a resolution authorizing said lease and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Any questions, council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right. Motion has been approved. Resolutions, council, why don't we take three at a time?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Cole.
I move we adopt a resolution approving submission of Blackhawk County Gaming Association grant application in the amount of three hundred and eighty-six thousand three hundred and ninety-three dollars for the Gates Park renovation project, and authorize mayor to execute said document.
No, you all have to stay to the end. All right, Mrs. Cole.
Anybody else? Move we adopt a resolution approving submission of Blackhawk County Gaming Association grant application in the amount of ninety thousand dollars for the Summit Housing Riverfront Sports Park Lights Project, and authorize mayor to execute said document. An eleven is a resolution approving a twenty-eight E agreement with the Iowa Alcoholic Beverages Division for Tobacco Enforcement.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Council, any questions on any of those items, nine through eleven?
Quentin, if I could just ask briefly on number ten, Paul, the housing part of that, we got anything in mind, or is that just, you know, man in that softball complex and thinking we'd fill it in with housing?
Right. Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. Yeah, that name is maybe slightly confusing. We're not in the housing business. We are looking to light some new fields that would allow us to discontinue use at Summit. So our goal at Leisure Services would be to decrease our maintenance. It would be up to Noel and his staff to work with the schools, because the schools actually, oh, we have a long-term agreement with them, but the schools actually own the property. So the housing part is way out there. I mean, that's a future possibility, but we feel the land is, has potential for that, for infill. But our main thing is the lighting.
And lighting-
And efficiencies for Leisure Services.
And lighting in those two fields will allow us to no longer need-
Correct.
Summit complexes.
Correct, correct. Right.
Thank you.
All right. Good question, council. Any other questions from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
All right. Those motions pass. Twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, someone.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Mr. Morsy?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving Iowa Department of Transportation Commercial Service Vertical Infrastructure Program, CSBI, grant agreement in the amount of one hundred and one thousand thirty-two dollars to pay for necessary upgrades to emergency generator, replaced door, bag makeup, and terminal electrical improvements for our regional airport, and authorize mayor to execute said document. Number thirteen, a resolution approving award contract to KWS Incorporated of Cedar Falls, Iowa, in the amount of thirty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars for the San Martin Drive and Port Road Traffic Safety Improvements. And number fourteen, a resolution approving professional service agreement with Aman Incorporated Waterloo in the amount of twenty-four thousand seven hundred dollars for professional services for the Verden Creek Tributary Drainage Improvements, contract number eight, forty, and authorize mayor to execute said document.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Any discussion, council? Questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
She remembered you that time.
Right, yeah.
All right. Those motions carry. Let's take fifteen and sixteen.
Quentin?
Yes.
I'd like to adopt a resolution fifteen approving professional service agreement with AECom Technical Services of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of seventeen thousand eight hundred dollars for engineering services, design and development of plans for the repair of the Eleventh Street Bridge, expansion joints, and authorize mayor to execute said document. And sixteen is adopting a resolution approving supplemental agreement number three with AECom Technical Services of Waterloo, Iowa, in amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand two hundred dollars for professional services to complete final design and construction plan preparation for the painting and structural repairs of the Fourth Street Bridge walkway canopy over the Cedar River, contract number eight-seven-five, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Actually, council, I'm going to take seventeen, because eighteen and nineteen are federal.
Okay. Seventeen is adopting a resolution approving construction plans for sanitary sewer serving University Avenue twelve-plexes as submitted by Holland Engineering and Surveying Limited of Cedar Falls, Iowa, and sewage treatment agreement, DNR Form twenty-nine, with the Department of Natural Resources, and the final acceptance of construction plans subject to review and acceptance by the DNR, and authorize mayor to execute said document.
Second.
All right. Motion has been made with the proper second. Council, any discussion on those three items, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen?
Quentin, could we just have a little overview on item number sixteen, what we're ultimately going to end up with there, on that canopy?
All right. Engineering. Could you come up to the microphone?
Dennis Gents, Assistant City Engineer. I'll have to actually review the document, because I was not involved with this personally. But I believe it does involve the, of course, the structure, there's some structural repairs. It's evident if you walked over the walkway recently, some of the concrete is deteriorating, and steel is rusting, and so this would involve putting together a project to make those repairs. I guess more details, I'll have to get back to you. Do you have any more other specific questions that you have in mind?
Well, Dennis, no, I mean, it says the canopy, so that's why I was curious if we're going to clean the canopy, if we're going to replace some, you know, some of the panels there, and I'm sorry if I caught you off-guard, so I apologize for that.
I'll have to get more information for you.
I would say, does that answer your question, but?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, sir.
Quick question on seventeen. This sanitary sewer serving University Avenue twelve-plexes, is that going to impact the current infiltration issues or anything else we've got going on in that area?
Okay, as far as the location of this, it'd be just, proposed just west of the existing Hy-Vee on University, and as submitted at this point, the sewage would go to the North Hackett Lift Station, which we understand there are some issues there. Hackett Lift Station, which we understand there are some issues there. We're still working with the developer and the consultant, as well as our own city staff to get some more data on that station. This would not be returned back to the consultant to submit to the DNR until we're comfortable with all the data that needs to be submitted.
Okay, so it will be addressed?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Protam?
Mr. Schmidt, do you, oh, you had a question about this one?
Yes.
All right.
The North Hackett Lift Station is where they have to go out and put a temporary pump out there when there's heavy rains.
Yes, that's correct.
Why would we add?
Right, this is.
Are we fixing, are we rebuilding the North Hackett Lift Station?
To my knowledge, there's no plan at this point to rebuild the station.
They are working on the infiltration issues, though.
Right, there are some lining of the existing sanitary sewer and some manhole rehabilitation that's currently underway in this area.
Oh, the lift station is storm.
Does that answer your question?
But isn't that, somebody's here a couple of meetings ago, there's a truck out there at Parks to get the sewage out of that lift station because it's overflowing. Why would we add more sewage to that lift station?
Mr. Lynn, maybe I can add something to it. The meeting we had Friday with DNR and EPA representatives dealt with many of the issues regarding how we handle expansions and how we handle requests for further extensions like we're talking about here. We can't do this if they don't approve it. So the short answer is, even though we're saying, go ahead and continue preparing for it, if DNR doesn't approve it, we're not going to be able to do it. So we'll have to fix whatever needs fixing.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council? All right, madam clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
All right, motion carries, 18 and 19.
Mr. Mayor Protam?
Ms. Cole?
I move we adopt a resolution approving the submittal of the FY 2014 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, or CAPER, for CDBG and home program activities for the period of July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2014, to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. 19, I move we adopt a resolution approving the FY 2014 Cooperative Agreement with U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the Fair Housing Assistance Program in the amount of $12,000 and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Council, any questions about either item? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Let's take 20.
Mr. Mayor Protam?
Mr. Welper?
Number 20 is a motion to receive, file, consider, pass for the second and third time, adopt the ordinance. Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second. Motion's been made with the proper second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
Motion to consider and pass for the second and third time, adopt the ordinance. Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
Motion to consider and pass for the second and third time, adopt the ordinance. Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Mr. Welper, would you like to do 21?
Sure can. So 21 is a motion to receive, file, consider, pass for the second time, an ordinance vacating the west 40-foot of David Street.
That was the table.
I'm sorry.
That was, I believe.
You have to read it before you can table it, correct?
Yeah. It's on the agenda.
There's a motion, so put it on and then come back to table, okay.
I understand, Community Planning Development Director, I did receive an email from one of the attorneys for the groups asking if we table this. They believe that they're close to coming to a resolution, but they're not quite there yet. They said you could table it until they're ready, or if you wanted to put a date on it, they thought two weeks would be enough. I do see one of the owners is here, if you want to ask him any more questions, too.
Thirty days wasn't a four. Okay, all right, please continue.
Okay, why don't I just read the request of Degas Hagenau to vacate the west 40-foot of David Street located south of West Parker Street, subject to the retention of a utility easement over, under, and upon the entire area to be vacated. Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. All right.
We wish to table that, I believe, for, I don't know how long a time, I wasn't told.
So someone else need to make the motion to table?
Anybody can make the motion.
Even the person that made the original?
You're the person that made it, as silly as it sounds. I'm making a motion then to table it indefinitely.
Second, but I wonder if before we do that, it seems that we have somebody, if we want to get a timeframe idea. Hi. Matt Oldtrugge, I'm one of the owners there at the Jet Lounge, the property that neighbors Mr. Hagenau's property. When we asked to table it in July, the attorneys had advised us that they thought that it could be, we could get an appraisal done. Winiger has now done an appraisal. Prices come down considerably. The attorneys, I know, were contacting each other, but no one has seen any kind of an agreement. So, you know, we'd like this resolved as soon as possible. I have no idea to stand here and guess when the attorneys will get the documents together and everybody sign their name to it. You know, we'd like to vacate the request for Mr. Hagenau if the two sides can come to an agreement. And then we would also ask at the same time that the side closest to us is vacated. But that agreement, although there's been an agreement in principle, nothing's been done in writing at this point, so.
So indefinitely, and then once you get done, you communicate with Noel and we'll get it back and be ready to go and put both of them hopefully on the, on the agenda if possible.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks, guys.
Counsel, any questions or comments? All right, there's a motion to table indefinitely that has been second. Madam Clerk, can you read the roll, I mean, roll call vote?
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
All right, that motion to table has passed. Number 22, please.
Mr. Mayor Protam?
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number 22 is a motion approving change order number three for an increase of approximately $50,000 for work performed by Kramer and Associates, Inc. of Grimes, Iowa, for the fiscal year 2014 Bridge Deck Repair and Overlay Program as a result of bridge inspection repairs and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Counsel, any questions?
Can we hear about the overrun?
Dennis?
It's always a question.
Not an overrun.
Or, sorry, not an overrun, the increase of the change order.
Dennis Gents, Assistant City Engineer, this is actually more or less a separate project to the original contract because of the condition of the roadway. The bridge approaches on MLK at Lane Street Bridge. The bridges approaches are settling, the approach barriers are settling, so we need to do something to correct that situation. And since we have an existing contract with Kramer, who's worked on 4th Street, 5th Street, as well as Conger Bridges, we felt that that would be the proper thing to have them go ahead and do those repairs as soon as possible. They're ready to start those first of October.
All right, sufficient, Mr. Jones?
Yeah, it's an expansion of scope, then.
Yeah.
It's new.
All right, all right, madam clerk, roll call, no, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, motion carries. Normally, we do both of them, but let's do 23.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morsy?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to instruct Leisure Service Director to prepare plan, specification, form of contract, et cetera, for the 2014 Burns Tennis Center Restaurant Project.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution setting date of bid openings October 9th, 2014, and hearings in, as, hearing is October 13th, 2014, and instruct city clerk to publish notice, set notice.
Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Roll call vote?
Mr. Hart?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. 24?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morsy?
I'd like to make a motion to instruct Public Works Director to prepare specifications, bid document, et cetera, for a rental of three motor grates to support snow operations. Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file specifications, bid document, et cetera. Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file specifications, bid document, et cetera. Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a, have a, adopt a resolution preliminarily approving specifications, bid document, et cetera. Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Any questions, council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to adopt a resolution setting date of bid openings October 23rd, 2014, and hearing is October 27th, 2014, and instruct city clerk to publish notice of specifications, bid document, et cetera, in the taking of bids. Second.
Motion's been made with the proper second. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morsy?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
All right, thank you. That is the conclusion of the agenda session of the meeting. It is now time for oral comments. Would we, does anyone like to address the council at this moment?
Randy Heer, 111 Highland. I know you get these questions from me and probably get tired of it, but this is mainly a concern by citizens. I get a lot of people come talk to me and concern that the animal control is not getting the resources, support that it really deserves. And so these questions come out of that kind of context, and those can pass out to the